Good evening. We have a agenda review session first before the council meeting. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, in order to amend and supplement revise our ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 548, Games of Chance, add Section 548, 001, 5, City Clerk Authorization Regarding Big O and Raffle Licenses. Number two, in order to amend and supplement revise our ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 208, City Council in Regards to Redevelopment Project. Number three, ordinance to amend and supplement revise our ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 848, Tree Replacement Requirements in Regards to Tree Preservation Trust Fund. We have no ordinances on first reading. We have resolutions. Number one, approve amendment, agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll, 1123-19, 12619. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, memorial resolution for William J. Hamilton Jr., City Attorney. Five, authorize reimbursement to multifamily property owners for trash recyclables for year 2019, trash amount $489,321.61, recycling amount $54,639.86. Six, authorize purchase by Police Department under New Jersey State approved co-op, 65 MCES CCPS, the Educational Services Commission of the New Jersey Pricing System, from CDW Government Incorporated for one Apple laptop computer with accessories not to exceed $2,610.88. Seven, approve awarded contract with Clean Air Company for proprietary maintenance and repairs contract for the fine move fence system, easel exhaust system at all three firehouses. Twelve month period commencing December 20, 2019, and ending December 19, 2020, not to exceed $7,500. Eight, approve amendment, resolution R.071948, reason to pay additional $30,000 with Suburban Consulting Engineers Incorporated for tank rehabilitation and painting inspection services for the water utility not to exceed $30,000. Nine, approve amendment, resolution R.061905, reason pay copier overage charges of $258.51 for the Police Department with Recovery USA Incorporated not to exceed $258.51. Approval amendment will not constitute any 20% or more of the original contract. Ten, approve payment for conflict public defender services, Thomas P. Abode LLC, not to exceed $2,400. Number eleven, authorize purchase by the Recreation Department of the New Jersey State approved co-op, 65 MCES CCPS, the Educational Services Commission of the New Jersey Pricing System, with from the Gillespie Group Incorporated for carpeting with installation services for the teen center, not to exceed $35,676.45. Twelve, approve amendment, resolution R.081824, reason change in certificate, certification of funds to account number 404180501 with Enterprise Automation Incorporated for maintenance and repairs and supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA system for the water utility. The term is a 24-month term commencing August 2, 2018, and ending August 1, 2020. Rebid specification number 68218RFC, not to exceed $63,742.62. Thirteen, approve amendment, resolution R.12921, reason extend the contract for one additional month for the period December 18, 2019 to January 17, 2020, with Elijah's Promises Incorporated for food preparation services for the New Brunswick Senior Citizen Resource Center, not to exceed $5,123, non-proton. Fourteen, resolution authorizing budget transfers, 2019 municipal budget. Fifteen, approve awarded contract with Maximum Quality Foods Incorporated to furnish and deliver food products for the Senior Citizen Resource Center, 12-month term commencing December 19, 2019, and ending December 18, 2020, specification number 77819PR, not to exceed $22,489.9. Sixteen, approve rejection of proposals and authorization to rebid engineering and site inspections for approved site plans, specification number 79320RFP. Seventeen, approve purchase by Police Department under state contract A89851/M0003 Software License and Related Services from SHI International Corporation for software for the Police Department not to exceed $65,618.7. Eighteen, approve awarded contract with Garrison Enterprise Incorporated to furnish and deliver installation, insertion valves, line stops, emergency valve repair, and replacement for the warning service, 12-month period commencing December 22, 2019, and ending December 21, 2020, which can be extended on a yearly basis for up to two additional one-year terms should the city so desire, specification number 783-19W, not to exceed $100,000. Nineteen, approve amendment, resolution R.021965, reason pay down for July, 2019, or July to December, 2019, $478,500, and 2020, $971,994.50. Authorize shared service agreement, the City of New Brunswick and Rutgers State University for 911 Emergency Communications and Radio Dispatching Services for the Police Department not to exceed $1,454,940.50. Twenty, authorize purchase by Police Department under state contract A89980/M0483 NASCO Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics Incorporated doing business as Wireless Communications and Electronics for one Panasonic Arbiter and one Panasonic CF33 tablet with accessories not to exceed $12,504.26. Twenty-one, authorize purchase by Police Department under state contract A89980/M0483 NASCO Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics Incorporated doing business as Wireless Communications and Electronics for installation services not to exceed $5,691.73. Twenty-two, approve awarded contract with Ferguson Enterprises Incorporated to furnish and deliver fire hydrants for the water utility, specification number 80519W, not to exceed $99,315. Twenty-three, approve authorization to advertise for Nickel Avenue roadway improvement, specification number 93019. Twenty-four, approve off-premise travel 50/50 at 222 Livingston Avenue, New Brunswick for Anshik Emei Memorial Temple, Tuesday, May 5, 2020. Twenty-five, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Amquith Crane, reason crane placement at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital to replace a rooftop condensing unit Saturday, January 18, 2020, alternate dates Saturday, January 25, 2020, hours 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Twenty-six, approve amendment, resolution R.111937, additional dates in December, 2019, approved relaxation of the city noise ordinance and road closure, requested by Gilvane Building Company to dismantle the tower crane at 9 New Street for the Standard and New Brunswick Project, New Street between Livingston Avenue and George Street. The dates are Friday through Sunday, December 13, 2019, and December 14, 2019, and December 15, 2019. Alternate dates Friday through Sunday, December 27, 2019, December 28, 2019, and December 29, 2019, 8:00 p.m. Friday to 11:59 p.m. Sunday, non-proton. Twenty-seven, approve awarded contract with Garden State Highway Products Incorporated to furnish and deliver regulatory sites, specification number 933-19, not to exceed Twenty-eight, approve amendment, resolution R.061693, the reason approved cancellation of the contract and authorization to readvertise and liquidate funds previously encumbered from resolution R.111520 in the amount of $409,585.85 with SolarMy Electric Contractors Incorporated for Lewiston-Hallington Street traffic improvement, specification number 894-15. Twenty-nine, approve amendment, resolution R.101929, additional date to perform work, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance, requested by Brave Industrial Paint LLC to perform night work at the rehabilitation and repainting of the Home News Row water tank located in 19 Home News Row, Sunday, December 8, 2019, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., non-proton. Thirty, approve appointment of counsel, John C. Mace Esquire of Mason Crest, D.C., for representation of police officer Justin Macia in the matter of Cedric Goodman versus the City of New Brunswick at all, not to exceed $10,000. Thirty-one, approve amendment, resolution R.071920, supplemental services, number two, with Motte-McConnell Group Incorporated doing business as Motte-McDonald LLC, 2019 miscellaneous supplemental engineering services not to exceed $117,932.48. Thirty-two, authorize tax plan to transfer credits on several taxing utility accounts. I defer discussion by council and public comments. This meeting will come to order. Kirkwood, Smallville open.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been widely looking satisfied and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice to the time and place and conduct of all public meetings in municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed, the City Clerk has been placed on appropriate floor in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, Family of the Home News. Would you please rise and be thankful of the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could remain. Homones, sons, for our men and women serving in our armed forces here and especially abroad, especially those in battle, especially those who have passed, those who have come back hurt. Thank you.
Second, Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
They have reported for his office by the City Clerk.
Item one, a letter from the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation in regards to the fiscal year 2020 municipal aid program. Item two, a letter from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection regarding a letter of interpretation indicating the presence or absence of freshwater wetlands. Item three, a letter from the Middlesex County Utilities Authority regarding the 2020 solid waste division budget, rate schedule, and service fees. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you.
Your vote.
We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. Number one, in order to amend and supplement revise our ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 548, Games of Chance, adding Section 548, 015, City Clerk Authorization in Regards to Big O and Raffle Licenses. Any member from the public would like to speak on that. Ordinance, would you please come to the microphone? Seeing none. Move the ordinance second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number two, in order to amend and supplement revise our ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 208, City Council in Regards to Redevelopment Project. Any member from the public that wish to discuss that one, please come up to the microphone. Yes. Move the ordinance second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
And number three, in order to amend and supplement revise our ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 848, Tree Replacement requirements in Regards to Tree Preservation Trust Fund. Any member from the public that wish to address that one, please come up to the microphone. Seeing none. Move the ordinance second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
We have no ordinances on first reading. We have resolutions. At this time, we will take resolution number four first. It's a memorial resolution for William J. Hamilton Jr., City Attorney. Any member from the public that wish to comment on that one, please do so at this time. Seeing none. Move the resolution.
Would you like me to read the resolution before the motion or after it, the county attorney?
Whatever your preference. You've been here long enough.
Resolution R.121932 by the Municipal Council, whereas William Bill J. Hamilton Jr. departed this life on October 10, 2019, and whereas Bill Hamilton was a native of New Brunswick having attended Lincoln Elementary School, St. Peter's Grammar School, and having graduated from St. Peter's High School in June of 1950, whereas Bill Hamilton attended Rutgers University from September 1950 to June 1954 and obtained a degree in economics. While at Rutgers University, he enlisted in the United States Naval Reserve and entered the Reserve Office Debt Program from which he graduated in September of 1954 and was commissioned as an ensign in the National Reserve. Bill thereafter went on active duty with the Navy being accepted for Navy Flight School in Pensacola, Florida, and Corpus Christi, Texas. In May of 1956, Bill was awarded his wings as a naval aviator and thereafter reported to attack squadron 105 at Cecil Field near Jacksonville, Florida for service. And whereas upon release from active duty in 1958, Bill Hamilton entered Georgetown University Law School, obtaining an LLP and later JD degree in January of 1960. Upon graduation from Georgetown, Bill was employed as a law clerk to the United States District Court, the Honorable Brian Simpson in Jacksonville, Florida. And whereas Bill Hamilton was appointed in 1962 as Assistant United States Attorney for then Attorney General Robert F. Kennedy and placed in charge of the Jacksonville office as First Assistant United States Attorney, where Bill handled a wide variety of both civil and criminal cases. And whereas in September 1967, Bill returned to New Brunswick and was employed as an associate by the firm of Pinkish, Chammy &amp; Sheehan, where he remained until September of 1970. In September of 1970, he established the firm of Hamilton &amp; Mulligan in New Brunswick, where he continued the practice of law. And whereas in November of 1971, Bill Hamilton was elected to the New Jersey General Assembly and thereafter was re-elected in 1973 and in 1975. In 1976, he was elected as Majority Leader and in 1977 as Speaker of the General Assembly. In November of 1977, Bill was elected as a state senator from the 17th Legislative District for a four-year term. And whereas in June of 1981, Bill Hamilton sought the Democratic nomination for governor but was unsuccessful despite endorsements by the New York Times and a number of other metropolitan newspapers. And whereas while working as a lawyer and legislator, Bill Hamilton's practice of law eventually led to a specialization in municipal law. Whereas Bill Hamilton served as New Brunswick City Attorney from 1986 through 2014 and thereafter was named Special Counsel to the City Attorney for the City of New Brunswick. And whereas during Bill Hamilton's tenure as New Brunswick City Attorney and Special Counsel, he provided invaluable legal guidance and advice to mayors, council members, administrators, and department heads that furthered the revitalization of the City of New Brunswick into the great city that it is today. And whereas Bill Hamilton was a member of several boards, civic, and professional organizations, including New Jersey Institute of Local Government Attorneys, CASA of Middlesex County, the Irish Repertory Theater in New York City, and was a founding contributor to the New Brunswick Sister Cities Program. And whereas Bill Hamilton earned the respect and appreciation of everyone who met him in his civic, political, and professional life because of his competence, dedication, integrity, selflessness, and professionalism. And whereas Bill Hamilton enjoyed sailing, flying, traveling, especially to his ancestral homeland, Ireland, or just discussing political and/or historical events. And whereas Bill Hamilton is survived by his four children, William, Brian, Sheila, and Michael, along with nine beloved grandchildren and his former wife and dear friend Barbara Hamilton Duffy. And whereas Bill Hamilton will be remembered with deep affection by all who had the pleasure to meet him and know him in his personal life and in his exemplary career as a true public servant. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of New Brunswick that the members of council express their profound appreciation and thanks for the life and service of William J. Hamilton Jr., their heartfelt sympathy to Bill's family, and their hope that the life and service of this remarkable man will be forever remembered in the annals of the City of New Brunswick. Be it further resolved that this resolution be engrossed in the minutes of council, and be it further resolved that certified copies of the resolution be sent by the City Clerk to the following, William J. Hamilton III, Brian Hamilton, Sheila Calibero, Michael Hamilton, Barbara Hamilton Duffy, adopted December 18, 2019.
Thank you.
Still moving, President. I grew up, all the Hamiltons are here, I grew up with them, amazing guy. Fly baby and a silver pacer. He, I grew up, loved the guys. So, like Mr. Chammy said, in his so well-written resolution, we certainly gonna miss him. Because I know, right, you are.
Yes, yes.
Sure.
I met Bill right out of law school and I was introduced him by Stanley Van Ness and Bill recommended to the mayor that I be hired as a city attorney without any experience and he was one of my best mentors. Even if I made a mistake, it was always, Bill never made me feel like I made a mistake. He was the greatest teacher I have ever had the pleasure of knowing and I miss him tremendously. And I ask God to please bless his memory and his family.
Yeah, maybe from the public.
Can't we say Bill was a great teacher, he taught me a lot about city government and I think he deserves a standing round of applause.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Hamilton for his dedication to the City of New Brunswick. Certainly helped me even before 2012 when I was elected. Certainly heard the Hamilton name a lot in my house, especially with my mother having taught a Hamilton or two or something like that. And also a couple of them going to my alma mater. So I appreciate everything he did, helped me and even took me out to Destination Dome for my first couple meetings.
I just want to say thank you to his family for sharing it with us. When I started as a council member, he was our city attorney and he was great. He was a great man. I fondly remember that he used to have his phone, his cellphone, and he always forgets to turn it off. So every time I was in the meeting, I was like, Sam, it's on your phone, you just turn off your phone. So that was our thing together. So every time he saw me after, every time after, before the meeting, he would say, it's off, it's off. So what I thank him, he was a great mentor also to me as a newbie in the City Council during my first term. And I am blessed to have met him and thank you for sharing him with us.
And I didn't have the great fortune of knowing him through the municipal government, but he got me involved with the CASA organization. And our board is greatly appreciative of all the work he did for us there.
I just wanted to say when I first came, because before I'd been down on the council, I had mentioned to him that, we didn't even know him back then, but I was very young and because one of the Carmans was one of my best friends and we actually volunteered on his campaign. We were little small kids handing out literature and stuff like that, but I finally came and told him I was a young kid, he said, well, you're trying to call me old or something. It was so ironic because we didn't know, we just knew we were just handing out literature and stuff like that. And just to know that all those years later, we reconnected like that.
Who else? All right, we have a motion in section.
Section. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Resolution is passed. Congratulations. Thank you. There are members of the Hamilton family who could come up? This is just a copy of resolution which we will hand out to the children, you know, very shortly this one is done there. And we have a couple of pictures for posterity. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but if you don't want... Thank you again. Thank you. Any member from the public that wish to comment on any of the resolutions, please come to the microphone at this time. Seeing none. Motion.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
We have items for discussion about the council, just before we forget. A very happy holidays and Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah for those celebrating on Sunday, and good holidays for everybody, hopefully in time.
I just want to say real quick, give thanks to the New Brunswick Police Department, the Latino apartments of New Brunswick, and other organizations. At the hospital this past weekend, we had another successful year of doing a Christmas festival for children. We saw over 700 children who got it, took a picture with Santa Claus, and thanks to the effort so everybody was involved. It was very nice, so thank you.
Let's just keep in thought, it's the holiday season and it's usually a special season, but I've been talking to a lot of people, and for this holiday season, it's a lot of times it's their first, first time that if they've lost a loved one, it can be a depressing time, a time of loss, and I just, I was talking to my last week, I had a conversation with them, you're gonna go through a series of firsts every time you lose somebody that first year. And, you know, just keep them in prayer, keep them lifted up, because a lot of times we're at home celebrating with our families and they're still mourned in the loss of a loved one. But just keep them in their thoughts and prayers.
I forgot Happy Festivus for those of you who saw it. Happy what?
Happy Festivus. Maybe Sam, yeah.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public. If any member from the public has anything to say, please come to the microphone. We have up to five minutes, one time up.
Just from the Office of Emergency Management, every, everyone out there doesn't wish everyone good cheer during the holiday season, so just to warn everybody, be safe and be careful out there, there's a lot of things going on. be safe and be careful out there, there's a lot of things going on.
If you see something, please say something. Anyone else? Seeing none, motion to adjourn.
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Anderson.
Yes.